Good morning, everyone. It's 9:01. Let's get the meeting started. Good morning. This is the zoning commission meeting. Today is Thursday, May 4th, 2023, and it is 9:02. Call the roll, please.
John Kern.
Here.
Vice Chair Pavlik. Mike Kelly.
Here.
Glenn Gorman.
Here.
Sherri Scarborough.
Here.
Lisa Reeves.
Here.
Alex Fromfield.
Here.
Mark Beatty.
Here.
Chair Sowards.
Here. At this moment, opening prayer.
Please rise for opening prayer and the pledge. Lord, we ask your guidance today as we consider matters that will affect the safety and welfare of many people in our county. Help us to listen with open minds to matters that are important before us and to act on the matters that will benefit those who reside in our area. Keep our minds open and alert, our hearts compassionate, and our comments charitable. Amen.
Amen. The zoning commission of Palm Beach County has convened at 9:00 AM in the Vista Center, Ken Rogers Hearing Room, VC 1WF 47, 2300 North Jog Road, West Palm Beach, Florida, to consider applications for official zoning map amendments, planned developments, conditional uses, development order amendments, type II variances, and other actions permitted by the Palm Beach County Unified Land Development Code, and to hear recommendations of staff on these matters. The commission takes final action regarding Class B conditional uses, subdivision variances, and type II variances, and issues advisory recommendations on subdivision, accepting, rejecting, or modifying the recommendations of staff regarding other requests. The Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County will conduct a public hearing at 301 North Olive Avenue, West Palm Beach, Florida, in the Jane M. Thompson Memorial Chamber, 64, at 9:30 AM on Thursday, May 25th, 2023, to take final action on the applications listed below regarding official zoning map amendments, rezoning, Class A conditional uses, planned developments, development order amendments, waiver requests, and administrative inquiries. So notices, the zoning hearings are quasi-judicial in nature and must be conducted to afford all parties due process. The Board of County Commissioners has adopted procedures of quasi-judicial hearings to govern the conduct of such proceedings. The procedures include the following. Any communication with commissioners which occurs outside the public hearing must be fully disclosed at the hearing. Applicants and persons attending the hearing may question commissioners regarding their disclosures. Such questions shall be limited solely to the disclosures made at the hearing or the written communications made a part of the record at the hearing. Any person representing a group or organization must provide documentation that the person representing the group has the actual authority to do so regarding the matter before the commission. Any person who wishes to speak at the hearing will be sworn in and may be subject to cross-examination. The applicant and county staff may cross-examine witnesses. Any other persons attending the hearing may submit cross-examination questions, including follow-up questions to the chair who will conduct the examination. The scope of cross-examination is limited to the facts alleged by the witness in relation to the application. Public comment is encouraged, and all relevant information should be presented to the commission in order that a fair and appropriate decision can be made. Is there proof of publication?
Yes.
Some motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Moved.
A motion by Commissioner Beatty.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Kern. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Okay, swearing in county.
All those wishing to testify or speak on today's items, please rise and raise your Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes.
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
We've got approval by Commissioner Scarborough, seconded by Commissioner Kelly.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Amendments to the agenda. The chair would like to invite Mr. Rutter up for a presentation.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Good morning, everybody. Thank you for opportunity. I've seen a number of familiar faces and a couple of new ones. I'm Pat Rutter, Assistant County Administrator. Previous life, I was in this building for about 15 years in a variety of different functions. So, BCB is one of my departments and will always hold it very near and dear to my heart. Wanted to take just a second to introduce a familiar face to a new role. Whitney Carroll is our interim Planning and Zoning Building Director. Been in the spot for about a few weeks now and very excited to have her. I think she's been here, it's getting close to two years, might feel like 20 on some days, might feel like more than that in other days, but very excited to have her here. She has slid in very quickly. I think you will see a seamless transition under her leadership. You've got a number of great divisions within this department. She's got her finger on everything and understands it all. Certainly, you know what zoning division does, you know how busy everything is, so there's no rest for the weary for any of us, but we wanted to welcome her. I just wanted to take just a second to formally introduce her that way. And as it relates to moving into a permanent situation, working with the county administrator, your commitment is to address it as quickly as possible. So, for now, welcome, Whitney. Welcome to the fun, and thank you for your indulgence, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. Welcome aboard. Yeah. Okay, moving on to the amendments to the agenda. We do have some changes to the agenda. At this time, let's see, we have...
Yes. If we'd like, I can go through the items for the amendments to the agenda, so you all have a sheet in front of you. The first item is number two, Lake Worth Crossing MUPD. We've received your request, and that was on the second page, requesting a postponement. So that would be moved off of the consent agenda to the postponement agenda, and that will require a separate action after the amendments to the agenda are approved. For the other items on the consent agenda, number four, public storage tranquility. We had a correction on the resolution. Number five, State Road 7 Business Plaza. We had the same correction to the resolution regarding the name of the implementing entity of the ordinance for both the two variances. And then, on the regular agenda, number seven, Towns at Tidewater. We'd like to clarify that we do not need a motion for items 7A and 7B. Those items were already acted upon, recommended by the commission at an earlier date, so the only item that we needed recommendation on and a motion is item C7. And that's the amendments to the agenda, if you'd like to make a motion.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve the amendments.
Got a...
I'll second. I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion from Commissioner Kern to accept the minutes for the amendment, seconded by Commissioner Kelly. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Square.
Thank you. We do have some cards on item two. No... Sorry.
Disclosures.
Oh, disclosures.
Thank you.
Any disclosures on the, any items on the agenda?
No disclosures, Mr. Chair.
No disclosures.
No.
No disclosures.
No disclosures. Spoke with the agent on agenda, item number seven.
Thank you. And no disclosures from the chair. Any conflicts or recusals?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'm recusing myself on item two, five, and seven. We have the Archite Morton's applications. My firm, Architecture Green, has landscape design contracts with Archite Morton, planning landscape architecture.
So I'm seeing no other conflicts? I have no other, I have no conflicts either. Okay, moving on to postponements, withdrawals, the agenda. So we have several cards on item number two. Most of them are for approval, for postponement. There's a couple who are not in approval. Is there anyone who would like to come up and speak in regards to this item being postponed? Sir, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. My name is Bob Sosnowski. I'm at 8241 Lake Cypress Road. My name is Bob, and I'm acting, I'm the current acting president of the Summer Chase Homeowners Association Board of Directors. I'm appearing here today as the representative of Summer Chase. Summer Chase is a 55 and older community of 221 homes that has been a fixture just off of Lake Worth Road since 1993. Our one and only entrance on Cypress Isle Way is directly across from the proposed zoning issue before us today. Many of our residents are elderly, in their 80s and 90s. With the last-minute notification last night, we have many people here representing the residents of Summer Chase. On behalf of the residents of Summer Chase and on behalf of Reverend Ty Ryder, the pastor of Reveal Church, our community's next-door neighbor, who has asked me to represent him and his congregation in this limited capacity, I am respectfully requesting a postponement of this proceeding until June, so that we can better understand the impact of this application. Summer Chase did not receive notice of this hearing until April 27 via certified mail. Pastor Ryder affirms receipt of this letter on the same date, even though both letters are dated April 11. Pastor Ryder and I believe we are the two entities most affected by the zoning issue due to our proximity to the area subject to the zoning request. We are still digesting the impact of another recent approval of zoning changes across the street from us, directly adjacent to this proposal. Neither Summer Chase nor Reveal Church received the Polo Gardens MUPD notification for the April 6 meeting. The minutes from that meeting indicated that no community input was received. I contend that there was no input from the community because none of us were made aware of the meeting. We have been shown information saying that the certified letters were actually returned as undeliverable, even though our office is staffed five days a week during regular business hours by our property manager. I've spent the last couple of days communicating with the developer, the director, and the staff of Palm Beach County Zoning, as well as Commissioner Sarah Baxter's office. I've secured support from Jennifer Morton, representing the developer, who confirmed in an email that she will also ask for a postponement, and has, in fact, asked to schedule a meeting with the Summer Chase residents next week, Tuesday, at 9:30 AM. I've also been assured by Lisa Amara, Director of the Zoning Board, that she will also support our request for a postponement, but that because the request was made within the five-day window, the board must take a vote today. It is unfortunate that we had to come, had to come to this this way, as we truly respect your time, but we only had four business days to digest and respond to the situation. Thank you for your consideration of our request to postpone this meeting until June, and we hope you will support the request with your vote. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Please step forward. State your name and your address, please.
Good morning. My name is Patrick Wilson. I'm at 3848 Cypress Edge Drive in Lake Worth, Florida, the zip's 33467. My phone's 561-346-5060. I'm here as a co-founder of the Lake Worth Road Coalition. It has eight neighborhoods with approximately 8,000 homes, and we are all for the postponement of this issue, so we'd like to have that known. If you need proof of my identity, Sunbiz will show you that I am who I am. Okay? So please say yes, Jennifer. Let's not have that today, okay?
All right. Thank you.
And we have 8,000 other people behind us.
Good morning.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I want to echo the concerns of...
Excuse me, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Ira Solomon. I'm a resident of Summer Chase Community, 3710 Spring Crest Court. I've been living there for a number of years, and I want to echo the concerns of our representative, Bob Sosnowski, who eloquently expressed the concern of those of us in the community. Again, it's very short notice, so we couldn't get a large group of people here at the moment, but there's a couple of those people here that are concerned, and we would like to request a postponement on the matter.
Okay, thank you.
Chip Arnold, 7256 Saddle Road, Lake Worth, Florida. I live down the...
Can you speak up, please?
7256 Saddle Road, Lake Worth, Florida. This is Town at Tidewater Development. I'm in favor of the postponement.
No, yeah.
I think that they want to put 69 units in there, and the density...
I'm sorry, sir. That's, we're on item number two, which is the Lake Worth Crossing MUPD, not the Town at Tidewater. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no one else approaching. Oh, we got one more. It's about item two postponement, just to be clear.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah. My name is Clay Keim. I'm a resident of Summer Chase, 4021 Summer Chase Court. I just wanted to rise in support of the postponement. It was quite a surprise to see how it unfolded, and so we're glad to see that you're considering the postponement.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, no one else approaching, so we need a...
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to postpone item number two, 2021-01526, Lake Worth Crossing PUD, to June 1st, 2023.
Second.
So we have a motion from Commissioner Kern, second from Commissioner Scarborough. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so item two has been postponed to June 1st, 2023. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Before everybody disperses for that one, can we just make sure that whoever spoke does have a card submitted? Okay, thanks.
That has been confirmed. And there are withdrawals, no withdrawals, and consent agenda.
So the consent agenda will need two separate motions. One for, one motion for the bulk of the items on consent remaining, which are item one, item three, item four, and item six, and then a separate one for item five, for which Mr. Beatty has recused himself.
So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the items on consent agenda, item number one, three, four, and six.
And I'll, and I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right, we've got a motion by Commissioner Kern, a second by Commissioner Gorman. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve item number five on the consent
And we have a motion, and a second motion by Commissioner Kern, seconded by Commissioner Scarborough. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we have a recusal from Commissioner Beatty. Okay, moving on. Moving on to the regular agenda.
Yes, and the first item on the, and the only item on the regular agenda is number seven, which is Towns at Tidewater. This item was at the board a few months ago, and then it went to the Board of County Commissioners because it's a small-scale amendment. It has to run concurrent with the future land use change. The board adopted the future land use amendment, but at a lower future land use designation that required a Class A for workforce housing in TDRs greater than two units per acre, so that's the item for consideration today, and the applicant may have a presentation.
Thank you, Lisa. Jennifer Morton with J. Morton Planning and Landscape Architecture, thank you for the opportunity to present Towns at Tidewater to you for the second time. So, as Lisa mentioned, it's, the request is for a Class A conditional use to allow density greater than two units per acre utilizing the workforce housing program and the TDR program. Staff is recommending approval. This location may look familiar to you. It's on Hypoluxo Road, just west of Military Trail between Military and Jog Road on the south side of Hypoluxo. It's 9.24 acres in size. When we presented to you back in November, we were requesting a land use designation of MR5. And with the MR5 request, we were asking for 69 townhouses. The MR5 does not require the purchase of TDRs, and therefore, the other part of the request was for our workforce housing. Instead of building it on-site, we were proposing to build it off-site and to utilize the rental house, utilize the multifamily product for our workforce housing. Ultimately, we went to the board a couple of months ago in March, and the board did not support the MR5, but did support the LR3 land use designation with conditions. The conditions limited the project to a maximum of 69 units. The conditions required us to purchase TDR units in order to increase our density. The requirement was to purchase 28 TDRs, and we were required to build our workforce housing on-site. And that requirement is for 16 workforce housing units. We also had a condition that a disclosure be provided to any future buyers of the project, identifying the area as agricultural and varying agricultural activities would be occurring in the area. Therefore, because of the LR3 approval, which was adopted, and then the conditions of approval, we are back before you today to specifically request the Class A conditional use. So this is the site plan that has been presented. We have made a couple of modifications since we were before you last time. We, the board did approve the LR3 land use. This board recommended support for the RS zoning. We're still proposing 69 dwelling units. We're still proposing the density of 7.4. The housing type is townhouses. However, the workforce housing units are required to be built on-site. One of the, couple of the changes that we made to the site plan, we increased the landscape buffer on the south side of the property from 15 feet to 30 feet. We also committed to constructing a wall along the south side of the property. We also committed to, we do have emergency access only on Ranches Road. We have no vehicular or pedestrian connectivity, but there will be a knockbox for fire rescue and for emergency access. The residents asked if we would make that an opaque gate. We committed to doing that as well. We also committed to having no construction traffic on Ranches Road. Another commitment that the developer made was to construct a wall along the west side of the property, adjacent to the single-family home, within the 17.5-foot buffer, and then along the east side of the property where there exists a church, we committed to constructing a fence. So basically, we have walled off the entire project from any impact to the Ranches Road community. You can see that our only access is from Hypoluxo Road. There's an existing median opening on Hypoluxo Road. It's right in, right out, left in, left out. In addition, it is a gated community. We have the required recreational area. We have a beautiful lake as you enter the community, and we have our townhouse product. This product is a two-story product. So if you think about the Hypoluxo corridor, and what we're asking for as far as density goes, Hypoluxo is a major east-west connector road in Palm Beach County. There's an interchange at I-95. There's a planned future interchange at the Florida Turnpike. And then, directly in front of the project is 110 feet of right-of-way, a six-lane median divided highway. A little bit of history on our community outreach. On February 8th, the developer met with the Ranches Road community. We took a postponement from our, from our Board of County Commissioner hearing in February, so that in March, we could have a, the district commissioner met with the residents, and then on March 8th, we had a follow-up meeting with the developer, with the Ranches Road community, and with the district commissioner's office. And then on March 28th, when the project was presented to the board, that's when the board, instead of adopting MR5, they adopted LR3 with the conditions that I just presented, and I'm sure staff will go over as well. In conclusion, we're requesting a recommendation of approval. Staff is supporting the Class A conditional use, and that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer, a question for you. Is that intersection, there's no intention to signalize that intersection on Hypoluxo, is there? There's no trigger for that?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, staff?
There's, this application was presented previously and was very thoroughly presented just now, so unless the board wants a presentation, we're fine with just moving forward as is.
Everybody good? Everybody's good? Okay. Thank you.
We do have a card.
Carl Turwiddler. I apologize.
Actually, you got it right. Turwiddler. 5782 Ranches Road, just down the road from this. You're treating this as if it's not part of our community, as if it's somewhere down the road, a vacant lot. It is part of our community, and we've been walled off already on the full half, western half of our community by Osprey Oaks, and we wanted to stop at Osprey Oaks. This is nine, nine acres, as you know. It was zoned for one per eight, one unit per acre. I am not thoroughly opposed to increasing the density, but I think that we are not getting the best deal out of this. They're putting the lake in the middle of their development instead of on our side. My view is build your townhouses, and that's just me, along Hypoluxo Road, your townhouses and your workforce housing, and then have your last four or five acres on our side be either where the lake, surrounded by native cypress, maple, pine, and oak trees as our buffer instead of a wall, or have one-acre lots. So we'll divide essentially in half. I think that's a good compromise. I don't care how many units they put on the Hypoluxo Road strip, but I do care about what I have to look at, and the fact that having those townhouses right up on our Ranches Road will ruin the quality of our lives. It'll be too much noise, it'll be too much light. Right now, we have nice dark evenings with a few lights around people's homes. That will change, and I don't want it to change. I like our community where we have one to five-acre lots where people can have agriculture. They can serve mangoes to the local community. I grow native plants, other people have horses, and I think that's important for each area to have either a park, which we don't have, or a community where people can come and relax, ride their bikes, bring their children. It's sort of off the point, but anyway, our community serves not just us, but everybody around us. And I'd like you to at least keep their density on Hypoluxo Road higher, and on our side, lower. So this is a win-win. We both get what we want, but I believe 69 units is pie in the sky. But I believe 69 units is pie in the sky. Forty, $400,000 per unit is certainly not workforce housing. Creating workforce housing for rental, maybe some teachers will be able to afford if they're charging for rental. But I think the purpose is to have housing that people can buy into and move up in their lives. Thank you. Thank you.
I have a question for you. Did you meet with the agent, the representative?
Yes, I went to both meetings, and they haven't really budged other than add a couple feet onto the, onto our side and offer us a wall, and I don't want another wall.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a quick question from Ms. Morton. And perhaps a follow-up to staff. So Jennifer, is that eastbound right-in, is there a deceleration lane planned for that?
I believe so, yes. I'll confirm that, yeah.
So there is a decel lane, and then to staff, this application meets all the traffic standards, performance standards?
Yeah, actually, there is no turn lane for this, because it doesn't qualify. It's a very low volume, only 10 vehicles turning right.
Is there a right-of-way there, though, by any chance?
They have to delegate right-of-way for that right-turn lane, but they don't need it. It's, the standard is 75 vehicles for the right turn, and there will be only 10 vehicles making right. So it's well below the threshold.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Kelly?
Through the chair. For the applicant, thank you very much. I greatly appreciate the efforts that you've put forth to speak to the stakeholders and all involved parties, and I'd also like to commend staff. Thank you very much for your work on this project and bringing it back to us. I appreciate that.
We still have another card or two?
Roxanne Ald.
I'm Roxanne Ald. I live at 5705 Ranches Road, Lake Worth. My property is right next door to this. I go road-to-road, from Hypoluxo to Ranches. I have two and a half acres, and it's agriculture. It has been for 45 years I've been there. This is horrendous, what they're planning on putting next to me. I have chickens that crow all night and all day. I have other animals I'm raising, I have peacocks, I have everything there. And I've been there that long. I am grandfathered in. I'm not going anywhere. If I were from New York and I wanted to move into that place, I wouldn't do it. And they have got to disclose that. I have a real estate background, and I know that. It's going to be a mess, and there is no deceleration lane. That's my driveway right next to it. I have a driveway off of Hypoluxo Road, and one down from me is a small driveway from Winston Trails. It's their side driveway where they have a little light there, and it's, you know, I think it's regulated by traffic, and also a bus stop for kids on the other side of the road. This is going to mess that up, because it's going to back all the way up there. This is 69 times two, twice a day, minimum, of traffic trips. It's horrible. Right now, I have trouble getting out of my driveway. I didn't want to move there. That is a double-lane, divided highway out in front of my house on Hypoluxo. The other side of Ranches Road is a nice country road. There is no way this is going to work. I understood LR3 to mean three houses per acre, not, there we go, the 69 townhouses again, totally out of place. We are an agriculture community with some this, that, and there, and it's, everybody's cohesive. Everybody's been there a long time. They want to live their lives out there. They don't want this stuff next to us that doesn't even fit there. And how they would sell these houses for, I think, housing is 175 to 2 something for workforce housing prices. Well, I don't know anybody that would build that in there because it won't fit with the rest of their community, and also, A, won't be able to budget it out. We were told that this was not going to work for them because at their meetings and all, where they said, "We will bury you." That's what they said at their meetings. They didn't, they were not willing to work with us at all. They, "We will bury you" is their mantra. And they said it to several people in our group here. They just want to build whatever they can on that land. They don't care about anything else around them, and they just want to destroy our whole way of life. Nobody in that whole community that we live in wants them in there. And it's just, it's a, it's across the street from Winston Trails, on the other side of Hypoluxo's Winston Trails, which, they came to our Board of County Commissioners meeting and were totally opposed to this project there because it would destroy their way of life, too. They have nice, single-family homes, some of them are two stories, some of them, most of them are one, built real well around a nice little golf course and all. And this is budding all the way up to Jog Road. Nice. They want things to stay the way they are now. They can look across and see greenery. They don't want to see three, two, three-story townhouses sitting there as they are all the rest of the way to Military Trail on Hypoluxo, which is all, this builder's built straight down the road. He destroyed all these places.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, I have a question. Ma'am?
Excuse me.
I'm sorry, thank you. Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Please.
I'm over here.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Thank you. You were mentioning Winston Trails. You don't represent them, though?
No, I don't.
Okay, all right.
They came to our last meeting, though, at the Board of County Commissioners, and they were for us.
Okay, I just wanted to, you were speaking for Winston Trails. I just wanted to make sure that you didn't represent them.
No, I don't represent them. They very kindly came because they want their way of life the same as we have it now.
Thank you.
Is what they told us in the minutes of that meeting.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Another card, one more card.
Last card that we have is Joseph and Mary Essa. However, they don't indicate whether they wish to speak or not speak, and they are opposed. So...
Can't hear too well. Can't figure out those cards too well. But there's a project, there's a community across the street, down a little bit, that's very similar to this. If you look at that, every one of those, your zoning recommended no for density. If you look at that, every one of those houses, in the community across the street that has that, every garage has either, that's the man cave office, or they put their supplies in there, or they put their little boat in there, or put their car in there in one of the garages, and they have the other car. Then they have two or three cars, or the kids' cars, out front. So, the one, the units that are across the street down the way, at nighttime, they're all parked in the grass in the front, on both sides. That's what your density, why I think your density said, recommended that that was too many units, because what happens is, you got your cars, and you get your kids, your mother-in-law, or whoever's living there, and they fill up all those parking spaces, and there's no other room to park there. On the unit across the street, if you drive through there at night, you couldn't get a fire truck through there. You know how big the new fire ambulances are? You couldn't fit one through there because of the density. And so, one objection, the high-density object, too. Also, at the meeting, I asked for light pollution lights and a wall on the other side where the church is, because we have a canal all the way, excuse me. We have a canal all the way around us in our community, and that gives us some sense of security. So I asked for, if they're going to do that, to put a wall on that side. And they said no, but they would put a fence. I don't know if they have to do that anyway, but... So, I just think the density is a little bit too high. And that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions? Okay.
If I may, a couple comments. So if you recall, the zoning division recommended denial of this application. The planning division recommended denial of this application. The planning commission recommended an alternative, which was the LR3 land use designation with the purchase of TDRs. And that's what the Board ultimately adopted. The original staff report that we presented to you had zoning conditions of approval requesting that lake move from its location down to along the southern property line, as one of the public speakers commented on, to provide a greater separation from the density. However, that was removed as part of add-delete at the Board of County Commissioners. But really, when we're talking about density, this is the same number that planning recommended denial against, and zoning recommended denial against. The only difference is, you know, the Board of County Commissioners adopted the future land use amendment, so they're, you know, therefore, this is the zoning applications that are needed to implement that adoption. However, you know, that, moving the lake along the southern property line would have established a greater separation and buffer and transition. Because, I don't know if you've been following some of our agenda items at the Board about commercial vehicles. There's a lot of conversation consistently about urban, suburban folks moving into rural or ex-urban areas, and then calling code enforcement because they don't like the rooster or the pig or the commercial vehicle that might be next door. So that was a technique that we attempted last time, this was before the Board, to move that lake down and have that separation. But that is not in the proposal. The applicant didn't support.
Okay, thank you for the explanation. Board?
May I ask Ms. Morton why they didn't support the, moving the lake to accommodate the neighboring properties?
Yes, Jennifer Morton with J. Morton Planning and Landscape Architecture. By moving the lake to the south, it affected our density, so we weren't able to get the 69 units. Also, we want a nice, quality project for the people that live here as well. We're proposing a two-story townhouse. That's not offensive to a lot of people. That's their first house, is a townhouse. And we already have, there's a 60-foot Ranches Road right-of-way. We have a 30-foot buffer, and each unit had a 25-foot rear setback. So our units are set 60, I think it was 60 feet back from the property line. So we felt that, we increased our landscape buffer, we added the wall. We have landscaping, but we want a quality project for the people that are ultimately going to live here. And I think that by moving the lake and having more back-to-back units, it really devalues the quality of the project being presented. So we were kind of trying to balance both. We're trying to address the residents' concerns while at the same time being able to deliver a quality project.
Thank you.
I'm ready to make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay, any other comments from anyone? Okay, all right, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the application.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion to approve from Commissioner Gorman, seconded from Commissioner Scarborough. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so we have four approvals and two, when we raise our hands?
Yeah, I think, because this is complicated, because I believe Commissioner Beatty's recusing himself. So it might be best to do a roll call in this situation.
Yeah, all right, let's do a roll call, please.
John, excuse me, John Kern?
Nay.
Vice, oh, no, Mike Kelly?
Yay.
Glenn Gorman?
Yes.
Cherry Scarborough?
Yes.
Lisa Reviss?
No.
Alex Fromfield?
Yes.
Mark Beatty? Oh, he's the one that's on recusal. And Jess Sowers?
Yes.
Five to seven.
Okay.
For approval.
Okay, yeah, we can do that out of order, I think.
I'm sorry, five to two.
Okay, we need a motion to remove the items 7A and B.
That was part of-
Do we need that?
That was part of the add-delete.
Okay.
That's automatic.
So that was on 7C, that motion.
Okay, all right. All right, moving on. I guess we, comments from county attorney?
No comments.
Zoning director?
No comments.
Thank you. Planning director?
No comments.
Executive director? And commissioners, welcome aboard. Okay, we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Anybody want to keep going? All right, thank you, everyone.